Can everyone see the agenda?
No.
No.
Is Marina here tonight?
Hey.
Marina is sick.
On the computer.
Okay, I see it.
Can everybody hear me on the computer? Yes, we can hear you.
Yeah, Mario. Good feedback loop out there.
All right, I'm gonna go off the phone, hopefully the computer works. Is that working now?
Okay.
Yep. It would be great to have Mario, but we do have a quorum, Kelly, just so you know.
Okay.
Three out of five ain't too bad. It'll get us where we need to go. This is very much like one of the interviews I did within the last couple of weeks. Everything just kind of fell into place the last second, just as we're supposed to start talking to the candidate.
Okay, I'm back.
One minute and counting. Close enough, Tito.
I would say so, yep, yep, I have 5:15 on my clock.
Okay, so do I. All right, welcome, everybody. Been a while, so we'll get through this one case at a time. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, my name, my name is Kelly Donovan, and this is the May 2022 zoning board of appeals meeting. For those of you who've never attended one of our meetings, I'll quickly explain how the meeting will be conducted. First, we'll ask the applicant to come to their mic, state your name and address for the record, and discuss your proposed project or request for variance. The floor will then be open for anyone who would like to speak in favor or against the proposed project. Once everyone's had an opportunity to speak, public hearing will be officially closed and no new testimony can be taken. After public hearings are completed, the board will deliberate and we'll make a decision on each case. The public is welcome to stay through these deliberations, but again, no public input is permitted once, once closed. For those applicants who wish not to stay through the deliberations, planning department staff will be available with decisions tomorrow. Zoning Board of Appeals is a five-member board. Tonight, we have three members present constituting a quorum. I will now call roll. Mr. Matzo.
Present.
Mr. Landers.
Present.
And Mr. Donovan is present. I see that Ms. Resniti is absent, excused, and Mr. Lisi is absent, excused. So we have a quorum. I don't believe we have any minutes to look at. Does that sound correct, Tito? It's been a while, so.
That appears to be correct.
All right.
We will get them to you next month.
That's fine. I think it was probably from two months, two months ago, wasn't it? Was our last time to meet.
Yes, I want to say, yep, March.
So Brian, bear with me if I'm a little rusty here, so. What time are we getting to be here? It's not quite time for the first public hearing. But I'm going to ask if the applicants are present. First case would be starting at 5:20, which is just a few minutes from now. It's Robin's Signs for Temple Concord, Nine Riverside Drive, an area variance to allow 35 square foot ground sign where one is not permitted and a 13 and a third square foot non-commercial sign where four square feet is the maximum size allowed in the R1 single unit dwelling district. To Tito, I'm gonna assume someone is here from that group.
I am, Kelly Jo Hunic.
Hi, Kelly.
Hi, I'm from Robin's Sign Company.
Hi, welcome, welcome to our little group here. We'll give, we have to give it, Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, we have to wait until 5:20 to get this rolling on.
Yes, we should wait until 5:20, which is time the public is note, was noticed to be here before we start.
Okay.
I couldn't, I can't see if there's other people listening in from my screen. Can planning staff tell if there's people that are not showing up that are here? Or we'll just kind of guess until we get to the public comment. I'm good either way.
Kelly, on my thing, it says there's two attendees, I don't know who they are.
Okay, that might have been me trying to get in earlier. Could be another window on my machine, or two.
It could have been from my phone, too.
We'll see. One minute to go.
I'll just drop down to one attendee.
I didn't close any windows, so it wasn't me.
I did close a window.
Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
I swear the minutes go so slowly when you're waiting for.
At least if I could, I might be able to occupy that minute just a little bit, well, it just rolled over, so if you want to go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, we'll get to you, Brian, after, after the, we're done with these. So back to our regular scheduled activities, Robin's Signs for Temple Concord, Nine Riverside Drive, I already read the the description of the request, it's an area variance. And if you would, please, Kelly, please introduce yourself and tell us about your proposal.
I'm Kelly Jo Hunic with Robin's Sign Company. We're proposing to put a sign in front of the Kilmer Mansion in front of Temple Concord. Um, I believe I sent all the drawings, I don't know if they got sent out or how that works. Um, the actual, this says 35 square foot, the actual sign panel itself is only 13 and a quarter square foot. The fabricated post and the decoration around it to make it match the building is what ends up being the full 35 square foot. Um, the Temple Concord is much smaller, that's only like a nine and a half square foot, but I guess that's in a specialized, the R1 zoning, I guess, I think that's the problem with that one. And the fact that there's the two on that same piece of property. We're just looking to basically get people to the right buildings, because there's no signage there now.
Oh yeah, that signage was in the application materials, but not in the staff report, which is fine.
Okay, okay.
Um, John and Ernie, did you guys see those signs?
I did.
Okay. And staff, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's the grounds sign, they're not permitted at all in an R1, and the other one is just too large, whether it's nine square feet or 13.
Correct, so that the commercial sign, which the Kilmer Mansion sign, we're considering commercial sign, a commercial sign because it's advertising the use of the space for events, that's not permitted in the R1 at all.
Okay.
And then the Temple Concord sign is a non-commercial sign, but the maximum size for non-commercial signs is four square feet, and this is exceeding that size.
Now, and Kelly, you're, you're qualifying that one and saying that was actually nine and a half?
The actual, the sign panel portion, if you take away the base, the sign panel portion itself is only nine and a half square feet.
But, Tito, do you have to count the whole base in that or not?
Yeah, we're, we're counting the whole, the, the whole, you know.
I just want to make sure we're going apples and apples here.
Sure, yeah, so the, our measurements are, are the signs and the infrastructure around the sign faces.
Okay. Okay.
All right, anything else to add?
Hmm, I don't think so, they're just really concerned with people being able to go to the right building the first time.
Right.
They've had people go to other, the other temple that's down the street, I guess, because it's, this one's not marked as well. And with the event starting at the mansion, they just want people to be, have the ease of finding it.
Right. Any questions from members of the board?
Yeah, I have a question for Tito, why are you counting the base of the sign when that's not actual sign?
That's how we measure the sign, so, you know, for consistency, that, that's how we do it.
That's not right, though.
Well, as an example, someone.
I think that that's how the, the statute requires them to measure.
Right, so as an example, someone could have, as an extreme example, a 10-foot tall base and a small sign on top. That would still be 11 feet off the ground and would have to be.
That would be a structure.
Well, it's, it's, it's an absurd argument for the purpose of description, but I get it. If, if the sign weren't there, that little brick piece wouldn't be necessary.
Well, they might, they might, they might build a brick piece around there for a plan or something like that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not overly concerned.
I'm just, I'm just questioning it, that's all I want to know, I mean, I'm, I'm not, it doesn't seem to be fair.
Tito, my reading is that either way, EBIT was denied, but it still requires a variance.
Yeah.
Right, I understand, I understand that, that's not a problem, I just don't understand why they called the base, because it could be just a planer.
Yep.
There's someone's putting in the ground.
I got it, you know, the only way it really impacts us is the discussion of whether it's significant.
Well, yeah, I, you know, I, I agree with that, I'm not denying that, it's just, and if you look across the street, directly across the street from there, there's a dentist office and they have a sign up there, too.
Yep. And Ernie, you got any questions for the applicant?
No, actually, the signs look very good, I think.
Yeah.
I like them.
Yep. Okay. At this point, then I would ask to open, or, let's see, does it say, I make the motions for, what if I make the motions that for zoning board to be the lead agency for seeker, could I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
What else do I have to do, Brian, before I open it to public comment?
Lead agency and declare type.
Oh, right. Type. Uh, this is, and could I also make a motion that this is an unlisted action? Could I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, then, I would like to open the public hearing, public comments on Nine Riverside Drive. Anybody that you can see is present on the phone lines? Or Tito, if you'd be so kind to read the number for anybody who might be listening in?
So, the number is 607-772-7028. You can call and we'll put you through. Or you can join via the link and raise your hand, request permission to speak via Zoom.
Thank you very much, Tito. From here on out, the clock is not going to be a problem for us anymore.
No calls so far.
Okay. Kelly, when are you planning on getting started with this, with the sign project?
They would like it up before the end of May.
So you're chomping at the bit, ready to go?
Yeah, ready to go.
Okay.
Tito, has anybody called in?
No, and we have two attendees, but none are requesting permission to speak.
At this point, I'm guessing the attendees are next to on the docket.
Time will tell. Tito, can I ask you a question, how does the signs that are being proposed in this one compare to the one at the church to corner of front and Riverside?
The corner of front and Riverside, oh, the new heights.
New heights. Do they have a ground sign or is it only the one across the top of the building?
They have a ground sign.
I believe they do have a ground sign. Probably similar. I can't say that right next door at Five Riverside Drive, that, that sign is pretty similar in size, although that's technically not commercial, but it's, it's pretty similar in size, it's actually almost the same colors.
And then isn't there also one in front of the staff building as well, Southern Tier H project?
Yes.
Brian, are you doing my job for me now?
Sorry, I'm just asking questions.
No, I appreciate it, you're, you're getting all the pertinent points out there, thank you. There we go. All right, while you're doing that, I'm going to may, can I make a motion to close the public hearing unless we hear something that demands me to reopen it? That sound okay, Brian?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, then I would move to close the public hearing for Nine Riverside Drive, can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we need to move ahead to the seeker, it's short seeker, so I will go through these and determine whether there's anything that's got a moderate or higher impact. So, will the proposed action create material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations? And we need to determine, is that little, is that a small impact or a moderate impact? I would categorize that probably as a small impact on its impact or not jiving with zoning regulations. So I'm good with a left-hand checkmark there. Will the proposed action result in a change in use or intensity of use of the land? No, no change. Will the proposed action impair the character equality of the existing community? That's left blank for us to consider. I don't think it will negatively impact the character, I think it could improve it, it could help people reach their destination with a little less anxiety, so I'd say small to, to no impact. Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area? No. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit? Like in a walkway, no, should not affect that. Will the proposed action cause and, or an increase in the use of energy and incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? No. Will the proposed action impact existing public or private water supplies or public, private wastewater treatment? No. Will the proposed action impair the character equality of important historic, archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources? That's again left blank for us to consider, and I would lean towards small impact. For a number of reasons, which we'll probably get into shortly, that there are a number of similar kind of situations in the immediate area. So I would say small impact. Will a proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources? Wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality for fauna, no. Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems? No. Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? No. Having gone through that, I would make a motion that we have a negative declaration for seeker, could I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, that gets us to the deliberations. And we have to consider whether it's an undesirable change, whether there's reasonable alternative, is it substantial adverse impact environmental, physical or environmental conditions and whether or not self-created. Is an undesirable change to allow both of these signs to be placed?
I don't believe it is.
I, I don't believe it's an undesirable change myself. For some of the reasons that you guys were already talking about when we're looking at Google, Google Maps, there's similar size and type of signs for similar type activities in that specific area, so. I, I think it's, I think it's going to help people find the location, the ground sign in particular. I, I like the look of both of the signs, they're, they're both pretty nice signs.
I agree.
I agree.
Okay, reasonable alternative, well, they gotta have, if they're looking for a sign, I don't think either one of them is huge. Total of 35 square feet is, it's not very large. I mean, the scheme of things, that's in the ballpark of the one across the street, the one, the one of the church at the corner of front and Riverside, probably a little bit larger. Didn't it look larger?
Yes, it did.
Probably looked closer to 50 square foot.
Yes.
So, I'm, I'm pleased with that, and it needs to be big enough to see, you have to see it driving by, so I'm not sure how much. I, we didn't ask the applicant if they considered anything smaller, but between 10, you know, 13 square foot sign, which is less than four by four and a 35 square foot ground sign. You go much smaller and people are going to miss it altogether, driving by.
I agree.
So, I'm, I'm satisfied without that having been offered by the applicant. Is it a substantial request? Yeah, you could make the argument that since ground signs are not allowable by code, that it could be substantial. But we want people to be able to find this location. And that's the, that's the goal here, is to find the place. So even though it's not required and, or not permitted by code for the ground sign and above the, probably double the double the size or triple the size of allow, allowable. I don't think either is usually substantial to me, how do you guys feel?
I agree.
I agree.
I think they, the proportions look good, I think.
It's a pretty massive building overall, and too small of a sign is going to look.
Yes.
It's going to look kind of silly, right, John?
Absolutely.
Okay. Adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions, I think it'll be a positive impact. It'll, people will be able to find the place much better. I mean, locals know exactly where it is, have known where it is forever. It will help the people that are not as familiar with that part of Binghamton. So I'm, I'm not at all concerned about physical or environmental effect. And was it self-created? Yeah, I'm pretty sure it was. I'm sure Temple Concord wants to be identified, and that's why we're here, so. I, I, but I don't have a problem with that being the cause. John, would you care to make a motion for us?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to accept the two signages, two signs that are going at the Kilmer Mansion and the Temple Concord. One is 35 square feet, the other one is, how many square feet again was that, Temple Concord?
The ground sign is 35 square feet, the other sign is 13.3.
13.3 square feet, I'd like to make a motion to accept this. I think, I think it goes very well with the Kilmer Mansion, I do like it, it seems to match the property, and same with the Temple Concord.
Yep. Could I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's three, four, three in favor, none opposed, your request for variance has been approved by zoning board.
Thank you all.
Good luck going forward, thanks for coming to see us.
I have one quick question, are they, are they going to be lit, are they going to be lighted?
We are not internally lighting them, I don't know if the owners are going to put ground lighting on them or not.
Okay, I just wondered. Thank you.
You're welcome. Have a good evening.
You too. Second case is Amicus, NY LLC, 105 Murray Street, area variance to allow an eight-foot wide driveway where nine feet wide is the minimum in the R3 multi-unit dwelling district. Is the applicant present?
Yeah, hi, my name is Paul Min Greeno, I'm representing Amicus, I work for Amicus Properties.
Hi, Paul.
And also here is Kyle Weeks from Chanis Anderson Architects, we're working with Paul.
Okay. Welcome. Tell us about your project.
All right, um, so Paul has a property on Murray Street, 105 Murray Street, and he is in the process of changing the use, it's currently a single-family home, two stories, seven bedrooms. He's changing it to congregate living based on the nature of their business and renting primarily to students. And so we've actually been in front of the planning commission and received approval to move forward with this project conditional of going in front of you folks, because there is something, there is one element existing on the site that is not allowing us to be compliant with all of the requirements for congregate living, and that is a small side entrance porch that cuts into the existing driveway, so for about 12 feet, we have a reduced width down to eight feet, which is below code minimum for any use in this, in this zoning district. And so we are asking for an area variance, and I guess our sort of argument behind that is, I don't know if Tito has some photos of what the exterior of the property is. The porch is original to the building, and it does have a very particular character and presence that we feel is unique to the house, but also to the west side of Binghamton, so we just feel that, you know, removing it to get that increased width would sort of be your, a bit, it wouldn't be responsible in terms of, you know, preserving the quality of the architecture character in that neighborhood. So, that's where we're at, and like I said, we've been in front of planning commission twice, we did our public hearing with them for the change of use, it was approved conditional of going in front of you folks for that driveway condition that we're dealing with.
Okay. That all makes perfect sense now, and just full disclosure, I own property like right across the street from there, 108 Murray Street. So I'm very fam, very familiar, I've owned that since 1986. So I, I remember the accountant who used to live in that house.
The beautiful home.
It is.
The other thing the applicant has said before in the past is this side porch, and if Tito were to show you a picture, it has very ornate woodwork, it is clearly historic part of the structure, it contributes to the storied nature of this, I'm like, it's not just a normal, you know, walk-up porch. It looks almost like it's a carriage porch, like a carriage would pull up to it at one point, and you would step into the house.
To, to be totally honest with the applicant, I've at times been very disappointed with the, the conduct of the tenants there as far as their impact on the neighborhood, they're, they're messy, they're very messy.
We, we do agree with you on that, and since we've taken over, we've tried to control these a little bit better with more of a stern hand, by passing out charges for leaving things a mess, and they're starting to get the hint that, wow, every action has a reaction.
Yeah.
That's how we try to do it, like we're trying to do, we own roughly 90 houses on the west side, and we are, as you could see, I know Dylan is on here, we're pulling permits, redoing front porches, and I'm trying to hold true to the character of the neighborhood the way it was. And I'm trying to hold true to the character of the neighborhood the way it was. And build them up and, and make them look, and maybe we can change some of the, the frat house type. People that we get in there for something of a little bit higher quality, that they're gonna end up renting from us, is our goal. We wanna be that step above and not be the craziness, but you're gonna get it, unfortunately, we are gonna get that.
I, I appreciate, I appreciate you saying that.
Some of what Paul has put forward in front of planning commission, I mean, just for your information is. There's definitely, especially at the back of the property, there's proposed some, you know, some alterations that I think are really gonna improve the. The, the quality of the property itself, that garage in the back that you see is gonna be removed and he's putting in. What the, what the property currently lacks, which is compliant parking.
Yep.
In the back and he's also, you know, increasing, you know, some area where you can drive on. But he's proposing to do that with pervious paving surfaces, so we're not, we're kinda treading lightly in terms of environmental impact. You'll even see there that there is one existing tree when you go in the back of the house, we've done that in a strategic way. To keep that one tree, but also thinking, I mean, about, you know, I think Paul has plans to put in some, you know, more corrals. Trash storage in the back and I think he has some plans to, you know, especially about trash pickup and, and how that can be handled differently at his properties.
No, you're saying all the right things, I appreciate it.
Yeah, we've been hiring out for the garbage pickup because unfortunately, the system that's in place here with the town with those small units. The wind blows, garbage is everywhere, every, every day and the, the blue bags, you've got some migrants going through the trash. Looking for cans and bottles, it doesn't work for us, I don't like that, I don't wanna drive down the street and see any of that stuff. And I'm sure no one in town wants to see that either, so that's just an off sidebar, what we're trying to do, okay?
And one more, I just have one more comment for you before we get into questions from the board. Since you do own a lot of properties and seem to rent a lot to students, I don't know if you've reached out to the, to BU. They do have a town and gown, kind of a interface to work with folks like yourselves on shared goals.
Absolutely, we have reached out to them, our, our property manager that's here on site has, had talked to them, we tried to get a network together. To see what we can put our minds and figure out some of these issues and work forward together, absolutely, because I, I, we want that, it's a business for us. We want students, we want good students, and I wanna give you good pieces of property to, to look at, say, hey, it's nice today. I'm telling you, the, the, a lot of the properties that I bought, they need some attention. I just met with a landscaper that's coming to rip out shrubs and, and do what we have to, to make these, bring back the character of these houses. And, and just clean them up, fix the foundation, put new porches on. So we're, we're, we're doing a stand-up job and trying to just move forward here, I appreciate any help that anyone could help us with.
Okay, well, I wish you lots of luck and thank you very much, it sounds like you're going in that direction. Members of board, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, what are your plans on removing that two-car garage?
I've got to go before the historical because it's on the historical. Area that I have to check with that, that's going to be done while we're, these kids move out in August. I've gotta get that stuff in place to make sure that we can, we comply with, with their paperwork. I know Tito had told me I need to speak to someone at town hall on that.
Right, yeah. Okay.
I have a driveway question, I see in the picture that's attached, the cars are stacked up, but it looks like people drive up the neighbor's driveway and cut across. How does that work out?
They, they, you're talking about where that little bump out, the side entrance?
Yeah.
They park right there, that's right on that line, that stacking, there's, there's gonna be no stacking because of the parking lot proposed on these plans.
Okay.
Or you can stack if it's a, a storm, winter storm, and they wanna get the cars off the street, I've got more spaces. That's a hundred and forty-five feet alongside that driveway from the road to the back of that last parking space. I've got a hundred and forty-five feet, I could put more cars stacked up, but.
I know exactly how deep it is, I've shoveled that far.
Yeah, okay.
Very good, but you don't have an agreement with the neighbor to use that for access?
No, we don't, we don't need to, cuz it's, it's an eight-foot pass and the majority of those cars are, are less than eight-foot wide. Most of your normal parking spaces, as you can see on the drawing, are eight-foot wide, or pardon, is it nine? I'm sorry, nine.
Okay, I just asked because where I saw the cars that are stacked in the snow, you can see where people have been pulling in and out. Across the neighbor's driveway and I just wondered if you had a situation with them.
They do, and because it's one way, they also come across ours to get into theirs, because it's a shared opening, so that goes two ways.
Yep, okay, fair enough, any other questions for the applicant?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much, stick around. At this point, I would, I would like to make a motion that. This is a secret type two action, no further action, environmental review is required, can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi, unanimous, so that can get us right to opening the public. Hearing for one oh five Murray Street. Tito, if you would be so kind as to read that number for us again?
So that's six zero seven, 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 two, seven, zero, two, eight. Or they can use the link and join as an attendee and raise their hands to be given permission to speak.
Thank you very much. Now, how did your process, this is for the applicant, how did your process of dealing with the. Planning committee work, was that smooth for you?
I think that it went very well, they were, you know, it's a two-meeting process, the first one, I think they were just very helpful in terms of. How we could make slight adjustments to our proposed site plan, you know, and react to some things that they had brought up. I think parking was the biggest concern. And I think, you know, the only, you know, lingering comment was, can you put more compliance spots in? And I think our, you know, we just, we did sort of push back a little that, you know, we're trying to, like I said, tread lightly in the environmental aspect. Not basically just pave all of the back of this house with impervious surface. And not rip out trees that are existing, so we really felt that responsibly, we, 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 as designers, we couldn't really see a way of. Of placing more than five compliance spots, but as Paul mentioned, you know, five is the compliant number, but the, if you really look at the real estate. If in, in, in a case like a, you know, a winter weather advisory or something, you can really fit a lot more folks in there. And if, or if these, if these tenants have guests, it seems like, you know. There's plenty of room and it's not going to make Murray Street, which is a tight street and is a one-way street, you know, more congested or unpleasant for the neighbors. And they did, you know, I think it was, you know, however many it was like six to one or something in turn, when they, they ruled on that.
Well, good, I'm glad you had a good, good experience with it. Any calls?
Put your photo back up.
No, no calls, Kelly, to answer your question.
Okay, I haven't seen any hands raised here, so I think we're good there.
Is this what, is this the photo you wanted to see?
Yes, John, yes. How wide is that driveway now? This, you know, from the porch to the end there.
It's, it's about eight feet, they're not actually making a change, they just needed. The fact that they were changing the use of, of the property triggered the need for them to meet the code. And it's not meeting the code, so that's why they need the variance.
I understand, okay.
I think it's just narrower where the side entrance is, right, Tito?
That's correct. Yep.
It looks like it's more like ten feet wide of the street.
Right.
Yeah.
It's wider at the beginning.
Yeah, it says here it's twelve feet on, on the plan.
So.
Yep. Just past the porch, it's twelve foot, but right where the corner of the porch, it's the retaining wall between the two driveways, it's eight foot.
Yeah.
Okay, alright.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, well, I would like to at this time make a motion to close the public hearing for one oh five Murray Street, can I get a second, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi, alright, moving ahead to the criteria, is it an undesirable change, is there reasonable alternative, substantial request, adverse impact on. Physical or environmental conditions or was, and or was it self-created? Undesirable change in having the eight-foot. I guess in, in essence, like a pinch point. I'm sure it's a little undesirable, but with the proposed change in parking to get more cars safely parked off the street. It's gonna be a transitory thing and it's not right at the street. I, I don't find it altogether undesirable. On the other hand, removing of that porch I think would be undesirable. Cuz that porch is pretty cool looking.
You know, and, and it was eight foot to begin with, if you think about it, and the garage was back there, I don't see a real issue with it.
And, John, it's been eight foot for at least.
Yeah, a hundred years.
Forty some, forty something years that I'm aware of.
Right, so I don't see it really being any undesirable at all.
Yeah.
As far as that goes.
Yeah, I mean, it's been pre-existing for a long, long, long time.
Sure.
And the house is prob- the house dates back to the early nineteen hundreds.
It's a nice looking property.
Yeah. So I don't find it undesirable. Not, it's not optimum, but it's not undesirable. Was there a reasonable alternative? There's an alternative to remove the porch, I don't like that alternative. So I'm not sure there was a alternative to this, to do it and do it right. You have any, either John or, or anybody, yeah?
Oh, I agree.
Is it a substantial request to go from the zoning five or nine feet down to eight feet? One foot below the minimum. I, I don't think, I really don't find that hugely substantial. The person that's gonna find it substantial is the person trying to put, put a full-size truck through there. That could be interesting, but that'll be their problem. No, I don't think it's a substantial request. And will it have an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions? It could, as it has in the past, caused, caused. Some. Concern between neighbors, but. People will be people. I don't think it's gonna have an adverse impact on physical or environmental, environmental conditions. And was it self-created? Not really, the, the building was built that way, that's the way the driveway was established. That's, that's the way it's existed for. Going on a hundred years probably, so I don't believe it was self-created, the, the request seems reasonable. Anything to add?
Wasn't this entrance to the side, Kelly, wasn't that where you went into the accountant's office?
I always remember seeing Larry through the big front window.
Okay, that's what I thought, my parents had Larry, I used to go there all the time and. Stuff, so I, yeah, okay. I thought Larry's, Larry's house, yeah.
Yeah, and he would bring his big old, what did he drive, a big Lincoln or something, he'd have it beside the house, right beside that side entrance. So, yeah. So, John, why don't you lead us in another potential motion?
Oh, I'd like to make a motion to approve. The driveway. Set back from nine feet down to eight feet, so we can have additional parking in the back for tenants.
Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi, very good, your request for variance is approved, good luck going forward, I hope it works out well for you.
Thank you, gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Alright. Last but not least on our list, Christine and David King, one laser pav, area variance to allow a nine-foot fence. Where six feet is the maximum allowed in the R one single-unit dwelling district. Is the applicant present? Tito, have we seen the applicant anywhere tonight?
I do not see the applicant.
I've seen the drawings. And I was hoping they would be here because this one seems about as simple as it gets.
We, we can try to give them a call, we're also pretty familiar with the case. Greg is here and he's, he's the one that first sort of interfaced with them through the, through the fence permit. And so we will give them a call, but again, if, if you guys would like, we can sort of run through the, the details of it.
Okay. Yeah, give him a call, it, it looks, I mean, if, if I'm reading it right, it looks. He has his number.
Kelly, my understanding is that the neighbor built a six-foot fence on top of a retaining wall that's three feet.
Yeah.
Which means that they have a nine-foot exposure, they wanna build a nine-foot fence on their side of that property line. And it sounds like they wanna build, really what they wanna build is a nine-foot trellis so they can put plants growing up to cover the, the metal, which.
Without damaging the neighbor's fence.
Exactly.
That seems rather, rather neighborly, so I don't, I don't see what the problem is, other than Greg.
Greg's doing his job, he's right, technically, he's right.
Technically, he is right, I, I totally get it. But I, I do, I do believe I would be happier looking at climbing plants there than that. Relatively ominous wall. Looks like a well-constructed wall.
So far, we haven't been able to reach the applicant, but like Brian said. The neighbor's fence is what's shown here in the pictures, can you guys see the pictures?
No, I don't.
No, we're seeing the report right now.
Oh.
Can you see it now?
Oh. Yes.
Okay. Yeah, so the neighbor's property is, is on a significantly higher grade, and so they built a fence which is compliant on their side. But on, on the applicant's side, it's much higher from grade. And so the applicant is trying to basically cover it up with a trellis. Tito, why is it solid color?
That's more like. That's just the color she stained it, painted it.
Okay. Is it as black in person as it looks in these photographs?
Actually, when I was there, the person, actually, I took these pictures, it wasn't stained until just a little while ago, must have been very further away. But it's probably close to that color.
Okay, looks like a dark brown stain.
Yeah, cuz you can tell by looking at, with the rest of the wood, it's, nothing else is darkened.
Okay.
It's pretty ominous looking.
I don't blame him for wanting to put up a nine-foot trellis fence.
No.
Either that or you can show movies on the side.
You could, on two sides, you could, you can put chairs out on the, on the street.
Yeah.
Wide screen right off the porch.
There you go.
Still haven't been able to reach the applicant. So it's up to you all who, how you'd like to proceed, we, we did get, we did advertise the public hearing, obviously, and we did get comments. From one neighbor.
What kind of comments did you get?
Um. No objection, I can give the names and stuff when we open the public hearing, but yeah, just the, the, the neighbor is from an abutting property and he. Agrees with the concept of, of covering the wall with a trellis.
Any comment from the neighbor who's got the fence?
No. Nope.
So you, you don't know their feeling about it?
Uh, we kind of do from when they apply for their fence permit to put their fence up, I, I don't think. Uh, we kind of do from when they apply for their fence permit to put their fence up. I, I don't think I don't think they have a problem with it. Yeah, they, they know what the applicant's plans are and they, they haven't commented.
Okay. Um, I would imagine, I mean, we can't go forward and either approve or deny without them here, can we?
I believe, as long as you believe you have enough facts, you can proceed. The only question is, do they want you to proceed it, or do they not want to go forward? And that's why they haven't appeared.
Do they want to go forward?
I, I, I would have no issue with you considering the evidence that's before you and their application and making the determination.
I'm willing to go forward with it. Because maybe they just forgot about the meeting or something came up, but make it.
Now that's, is that gonna? Come back. I would imagine the trellis is only gonna go out as far as their driveway or as their fence, or am I wrong?
The drawing that's showing it goes right to the corner where it turns and goes back to the other, returns to the other house. So it's well back off the sidewalk, so it's not gonna create an issue when you back out.
Yeah, it, it's basically the extent.
Okay. Yeah, I'm happy to go ahead.
We should open it to the public. See if there's anybody here to, to speak in favor or against.
Okay, well, let's just, um, let's just recap here. We've got an application from Christine and David King. One Lathrop Ave, area variance to allow a nine-foot fence where six is the maximum at an R1 single family unit drought district. So I believe we're gonna, uh, proceed with our discussion. Uh, we've looked at the, the committee, the zoning board has looked at, uh, the, uh, facts of the case, the pictures submitted. And if we're gonna proceed, I think we need to take note and make a motion. This is a secret type two action. No further environmental review will be required. Could I get a second for that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, then at this point, let's open for public, uh, hearing. One Lathrop Ave, uh, for discussion of their fence. Tito, if you would be so kind as to read that number for us again.
Number is six zero seven, 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 two, seven, zero, two, eight. Uh, people interested in commenting could also join via the Zoom link and raise their hand as an attendee.
Okay, thank you very much.
And Tito, can they get the Zoom link off the city's? If you go to the city's calendar, city's webpage for the calendar and tonight's meeting, that Zoom link is posted there?
Correct. It's, it's, it's the same Zoom link, um, that's on the public notice sign in front of the property and that was mailed out to property owners and put in the presence on bulletin. Um, I can tell you that the property owner of twenty-seven Chestnut, which is the property to the rear of one Lathrop, it was the owner of that property, Emmett Martin, called um, and said that he has no objection to the proposed nine-foot fence and that he thinks it is a good idea.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. It looks like all of our extra participants have fallen away. It's just us.
Give it another minute. If no one shows up, move forward.
Very good. And Tito, for your information, um, we did get notice on that Murray Street project in a timely fashion.
Oh, good.
So, uh, we were notified.
It was a sign, did you notice if the sign was still there?
I did not.
Those get, uh, those sometimes disappear, but.
Yeah, it's, it's an interesting little neighborhood. It, it goes up and down depending on the kind of the
Time of year.
Uh, the climate of the, the clientele that are coming through.
Got you.
You, you would think that, uh, you know, some of the people, I think, in the, in the property we were talking about, one of them was a Harper's Ferry crew chief, I think. And you would think they'd be a responsible group.
Well, once you put people in a group
I know.
Of a certain age.
I know. I mean, overall, they're not that bad, really. They're just, they're more messy than anything.
Yeah.
And I'm pretty sure I was back then too. I'll never really admit to it, though. I think our minute has come and gone. So I would make a motion that, uh, we close the public hearing for one Lathrop Ave. Could I have a second, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright, so now we can move on to the criteria. Is it an undesirable change? Is there reasonable alternative substantial request adverse impact or self-created? Uh, is it an undesirable change to grant this, uh, ability to go to nine feet? I really don't think so. I mean, it's gonna, it's gonna do two things. It's gonna, um, cover up that fence and make it look a lot more inviting. Um, it's, it's gonna make it less kind of imposing. It's nicely preserved and I think it'll be protected somewhat by the, uh, by the trellis without having the growing matter. So I don't see it as an undesirable change to the standards to allow this. How do you guys feel?
I agree.
I agree. I think it'll make it look better.
Yep. Is there a reasonable alternative? I guess they could've gone, gone with six foot. But I think six foot would look, I mean, if you look at that picture, if you leave three feet of that standing over the top, it's gonna, it might look a little strange. And the trellis probably would look better all the way to the top. So there may have been a, a reasonable alternative, but I don't think it's the most aesthetic. So I'm, I'm, I'm happy with the with the nine foot. And, and understanding this is just for this situation and just due to the fact of there being three feet difference in elevation between, you know, the distance of the property line, uh, from one to the other. Is it a substantial request? I don't think so, just based on what I was just talking about. The other property is sits approximately three feet higher. So to match that side by side, that three foot has to be made up somewhere. So it is, I mean, in numbers and percentages, it might be substantial, but I think for just this situation, I don't think it's substantial. Is it gonna have an adverse impact on physical or environmental, environmental conditions? I don't think so. I, I think it'll look very I think it should look very good. It'll, it'll look better from the street for both properties, I believe. And it, I mean, it's possible you could get a little green effect from the, uh, climbing, whatever plants are coming up the, uh, on the trellis. So it could actually improve the, uh, ability to uptake water there a bit. And was it self-created? Sure. I believe it was. But I think it's self-created in the hopes that you make things look a little bit better. So I'm, I'm not upset with that.
Kelly, would you also agree that to some extent the need or the description for nine feet is required by the fence that was put up next door so that in a sense that they want to put it up and put it over six foot tall, but at the same time, it's a response to what was built next door. So that it's, in some sense, it's not self-created.
Oh, okay, I, I could, I could see that point. Uh, it is matching an, an existing approved meeting, the zoning requirements, uh, fences right adjacent to them that is a six-foot fence. So they're addressing a six-foot fence with what in essence should be a six-foot fence. Um, but just due to conditions, so it is conditions beyond their control somewhat, yes. So it may not be self-created. Good point. I don't think, I don't think it would bother me too much either way, but I do get your point. John, do you have any, uh, uh, recommendation for us?
Yeah, I'll make a recommendation.
Okay.
I'd like to approve one Lathrop Avenue to go with the area variance that allows a nine-foot fence where a six-foot maximum allowed for an R1 single unit dwelling district is only allowed.
Could I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Did you have any qualification to that, John?
No, no, I think we're good there.
Okay, then that one is approved. If you guys could let them know at your, uh, next day's business, that'd be great. Alright, do we have any other business, Tito, or Brian, anything?
Um, the only thing I wanted to mention is that New York State has started to adopt some laws in regards to remote meetings. I believe that the prevailing wisdom is that under that wall, to continue going the way we are, uh, we'll probably have to go back to in-person meetings, which probably will make some of you very happy. Some of you, maybe not.
No.
But, uh, they're, what, what they're saying is that for a board to conduct business, you have to adopt rules that would allow someone to participate. And it has to be like special circumstances, which are generally someone's disability, illness, caregiving for a family member or something unexpected that required you to be away. Now, they say it's unexpected, but it has to be at least a week in advance because otherwise you couldn't follow the notice requirements that are if you go remote, because you have to open it to the public at that point. If you go back to in-person, it doesn't have to be on Zoom anymore. It can be televised, not televised, but streamed. But it doesn't have, the public is not to participate. The other thing that'll probably be, big for you is your meeting almost always coincides with city council.
Yeah.
For safety purposes, council is usually meeting in the chambers these days because the caucus room is too tight, too small, too air restricted. It's, it doesn't meet any of the protocols.
Right.
So it may require the zoning board shifting to a Tuesday night. I don't know how, what that does to some of your schedules.
We used to be on Tuesday night.
Okay. I don't know if that's an issue, but it just, it probably may not be next month, but the following month it may be.
Brian, how about?
I just wanted to give you guys a heads up so that you could plan for that.
How about possibly using the area we used in the short term when we did get back together, that lobby area?
Uh, it's something we can look at.
Or Tuesday.
We can look at, but Tuesday nights works better because the security desk is there at the front, so that they can get room security to be there. It just, I, I believe that probably would, would work better.
Okay. Uh, John and Ernie, how do Tuesdays look for you going forward?
Fine.
First, first Tuesday of the month.
Yeah, it's fine by me. Actually, we'd probably have less interruptions because holidays end up on Mondays, so.
Yeah, that's why we were Tuesdays originally.
Yeah.
But then we got into a situation where, uh, we were having delays because of the schedule and try, and trying to get a Monday so that we didn't, um, miss them a whole cycle of month. But we can look at Tuesday. Uh, probably just need to check with Marina and Mario to make sure it's gonna work for them.
And hopefully, Tito, you're aware of that. I did catch you off guard by what I just said.
I apologize. I was not paying attention. Somebody was emailing me about the work session that's, that just started, but
Okay.
I will catch up with you tomorrow.
We have, what I was just telling him is that because of the work session being on Mondays, we may have to take zoning board to Tuesday nights, like it used to be.
Oh, okay. Yeah, that's, that should be fine.
Probably not next month, but the month after. I just wanted to make sure that people were aware of and could make their schedules that they weren't totally caught off guard.
Okay. Thank you, Brian. Yeah, I had, I had heard rumbling of that already. Uh, any other business? Anybody? Is Juliette still here? Anything for, from you?
He is there. Oh, uh, Obed, uh, is now a county planner for, for Orange County, New York.
Oh, good for him.
Yeah, so hopefully we'll be filling that position soon.
He's, we're just another stepping stone.
Unfortunately, yes, yeah.
You get them all trained up and they grow up and move away.
They just use me, Kelly.
Hey, that's how I feel every day over.
Chill me up and spit me out.
It's good to have some dedicated folks to stick around. We appreciate you. Alright, uh, unless we have anything else? Uh, motion to adjourn? Could I get a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, thank you very much. See you next, next month. Thank you.
Good night, guys.